I'd like to open the meeting at 7:07. I apologize, I was holding up the meeting, I was just running a little late this evening. I figured, I didn't want my colleagues to smell a little fish fry. Thank you. I'd like to open up the meeting at 7:06, like I said, or 7:09. Transmitting of the Treasury warrants, 33, 33A, 34, and 34As. Is there a motion to accept? Motion made by Selectmen Salmagaly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectmen Newhouse. All those in favor, unanimous. A 7 o'clock appointment, Ryan Kane, Wilmington Little League, requests to conduct a parade on Saturday, April 19, 2014, 2014, from Town Common to Rotary Park in conjunction with opening day ceremonies. Once again, I apologize for running late. Thank you.
We have long forward to a parade in a few more weeks, but this will be our sixth year having the parade, and it's really become a community event to kick off our baseball and softball season, and it's, it's really become a nice tradition, I think. The Kiwanis will once again be cooking and serving hot dogs for us, and the Wilmington Minutemen usually lead the parade as well. We are requesting the date of April 19, starting at 9:30. The parade of players and coaches will leave the 4th of July building and proceed past the Common and up Church Street, past the Public Safety Building, ending up at Rotary Park for our opening day ceremonies and first game between the Twins and the Indians. And, you know, on behalf of Wilmington Little League, we really appreciate the support of, you know, the Board of Selectmen, the Town Manager, for this event, and, you know, always happy, you know, that you all come to the event, and it should be a lot of fun, and hope to see you all there.
Yeah. Once again, the parade's always a great day, especially when the weather's on your side.
Right.
And Jeff, is there any conclusion or anything?
No, that date is good. I've talked to the police chief, and there's no issue.
Agreed. And I'll open up to the board. Anybody want to make a quick comment?
No, other than this gentleman to your right came dress shop for the occasion. I assume that you'll be marching too?
Yep.
All right, well then I'll be there. Thank you.
On a personal note, I'd just like to express my gratitude to the President, Rick, and your whole committee and everybody that runs Little League, because they always reach out to me in Veteran Services to get a couple of young vets to throw out the first pitch and partake in the parade, and that, they always get a kick out of that.
Yeah, we hope that's an option for this year, too.
Yeah, absolutely. How about an old vet?
There you go.
Why not?
Easy. I came with my uniform, though it shrunk. I'm sorry.
Just wanted to say thank you for being here. I mean, obviously, I look forward to this every year, and you all do such a fantastic job. I think the other members of the board certainly have said it very well. What's your name?
Hayden.
Hayden. And what team were you on last year?
Last year I was on the Blue Jays.
Blue Jays. Excited for this season?
Yep.
Excellent.
I'm not going to be in the majors this year. I'm going to be in AAA this year, because I just missed the cutoff of deadline for age. So, I'm gonna try my best in AAA and hope that, hope that'll pick me in majors.
You've got connections up high in the league.
What grade are you in?
I'm in fifth grade.
And how old are you?
I'm 10.
And what school do you go to?
The North.
The North. Well, thank you very much for being here. Really appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you.
It's a great tradition. Look forward to it every year. Thanks for continuing it. I think the League, when you restarted this back up six years ago, it's been just one of those things, I think we all look forward to, and it's a lot of fun to participate in. So, thank you very much, and we'll look forward to seeing you out there, and have a good season.
Thank you.
Once again, congratulations. It's always a great time, and I love to open up to the board, let the board make comments, because this young man coming to the meeting, and that means a lot for you to be here, and I believe that's your dad, and he does an outstanding job, and I know your dad on a personal level, and you guys do a great job, and I always look forward to those hot dogs and those diet sodas.
That's right.
All right?
I know, one other thing I just remembered, too. You know, in the past, there's been rain dates, have been the next day. Obviously, the next day is Easter, so we couldn't have it, we would look to have it possibly the next Saturday if there ever was rain, and we'd, you know, we'd alert the town as early as possible.
We work with you, not a problem.
Right.
All right?
Thank you.
Super. Have a nice night.
You too.
Nice to see you. Take care.
Do we need to move and vote on it?
Yeah, because it was so exciting just having you here, so, you know, we forgot soon that you'd make the motion.
I'll make a motion to grant the request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Selectmen Salmagaly to grant the request, second by Selectmen O'Connell. All those in favor, unanimous, and have a good night. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, moving right along. Let's see. Discussion relative to the board's intention to lay out the ways, lay out the ways described in the proposed warrant article, Eleanor Drive, and I imagine this is to the Town Manager.
Yes, as you know, from year to year, prior to the town meeting, there's a public hearing, if necessary, that's conducted for the laying out of ways. In this case, the, this year, the only particular street that is being designated is Eleanor Drive. The description, you should have received a copy in your packet. The one notation I would make is that, and this will be modified, but the, a couple of the descriptions, there's a conflict between the distances as referenced numerically versus by word, and we've established that the numbers are accurate, but we'll make the revision in the final version before it is included on the, in the article. So, what I would be looking for is, after the board has entertained any comments, a motion to first close the hearing, once you've entertained comments, and then to accept Eleanor Drive for further action relative to acceptance of streets at the annual town meeting on May 3.
Is there a motion as described by the Town Manager?
Anyone ask for comment, if there's any comments in the, in the audience or otherwise?
In other words, a public hearing, is there a comment from anybody in the audience? I make it noted that there's not a comment from the audience, and I'll just move back to the board for if there's a motion to accept, is described by the Town Manager.
You want to, you want to just also move to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion, we move to close the hearing.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectmen Newhouse. All those in favor, unanimous to close the hearing. Anyone a motion on acceptance of that?
Right.
Make a motion for this, right?
Yes.
Is there a motion for the board to accept Eleanor Drive to be an accepted street at the annual town meeting on May 3, 2014?
Make a motion to that. I'm sorry.
I would make the same motion to that effect.
All right. And is there a second? Second, all right, motion made by Selectmen Shumpu, second by Selectmen O'Connell. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is the review of annual town meeting warrants, articles submitted by petition. And once again, this will be the Town Manager.
We have 10, 10 articles that have been submitted to the town. I'll just go through them in the order that they were turned in to the Town Clerk's office. The first article is request to purchase town-owned property, map 6, parcel 18, lots 179, 180, 181, and 182, Page Street. It was submitted by Mark Nelson. Second article, again, to purchase town-owned property, map 6, parcel 21, portions of lots 212, 213, 214, 215, and 216, Poplar Street, again, Mark Nelson. The third article is a request to rezone from residential 60, R60, to residential 20, map 9, parcel 54, also referenced as 205 Aldrich Road. The petitioner is Robert Peterson. Another request to purchase town-owned property, this is map 6 parcel, actually, it's not referenced as a parcel, but we've identified it to be parcel 21, portions of lots 205, 206, 207, 208, 209, 210, and 211. This is, again, Poplar Street. Petitioner is Mark Nelson. Another request to purchase town-owned land, map 50, parcel 16, Sheldon Avenue. Petitioner is Raymond Lepore. Another request to purchase town-owned property, map 50, parcel 18, Sheldon Avenue. Petitioner is Christopher Lepore. Request to rezone from residential 20 to general business. This is map 72, lot 1, also known as 276 Lowell Street. The petitioner is Kevin Brennan. Another request to purchase town-owned property, this is map 4, parcel 10, Marion Street. The petitioners are Lee and Kelly Marinson. Then a request to rezone from residential 60 to residential 20 on map 23, parcel 106, 8, Harold Avenue. The petitioner is Ronald LaLiberde. And then the last request is to change in zoning. This is parcel, or the street address, 101 Main Street. I would note that with respect to the last article, 101 Main Street, there was some concern on the part of the Town Clerk. When this article was submitted, the description of the article didn't conform to the typical form that a petition article would be submitted in. In addition, the signature, signatory page was separate from the body of the article. So, the Town Clerk spoke with the petitioner, Abolie Karaj, to confirm that the individual signatories had actually read the petition, and then, in addition, she contacted the petitioners. There was one petitioner that advised her that he had not read or signed the petition. Based upon consultation with Town Council, in light of that circumstance and the form that the petition was submitted in, it is both the Town Council and Town Clerk's recommendation that that petition article be rejected. As you know, the final warrant will be presented to the board on your meeting of March 10, but it would be, I think the, I guess, question would be whether to include, whether the board wishes to include this petition article in the warrant as presented, or to actually reject the petition article relative to 101 Main Street.
Whatever the pleasure of the board.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm of the mind to take the Town Council's advice and remove it from the, from the warrant. If it doesn't, it didn't adhere to the standards required. Not that I'm necessarily opposed to what the petitioner was requesting, but everyone else has to follow the rules, so I regrettably, hopefully, he can come back and try again the next time. That's my feeling.
Yeah, I guess, not, not being prepared to address that specifically tonight, I don't know if I would support it or not. If it's something that I thought was in the best interest of the town, I wouldn't have a problem, you know, as a, as a board trying to put it on to the, the warrant, but it, I'd have to look at it more to decide whether or not I thought that made sense, especially in light of the president.
Essentially, I think the options would be for the board to either determine that it doesn't meet the requirements of a petition article and not place it on the warrant for publication. In the alternative, the board could allow it to be placed on the warrant, and then at town meeting, by determination of the moderator, it could be determined at that point out of order.
Okay, then I misunderstood, at least, part of the issue that was being raised. I agree with Mr. Shumpu that if it didn't meet the requirements, then we should not include it in the warrant as a petition article. I mistook something that was said here as a suggestion that the board could still include, in substance, the same article on the warrant, but not as a petition article. And I'm, I'm saying I'm not interested in doing that unless I really understand it, and it's a, it's an issue that speaks to the town. For example, we had a, we had a similar one a few years ago, in terms of the residency requirement for the manager, and a petitioner brought it forward. We weren't convinced it was in the form that would pass muster, but we thought it was a good idea, so as a Board of Selectmen, we included it as a town article on the warrant. So, I, so as to the first piece of it, I say we'd not include it in the warrant as a petition article, because it doesn't meet the requirements. If there's anybody who reads it on this board and thinks it's a good idea for the town, we could always put it on the, on the warrant.
If you want to make that in form of a motion, you know, the recommendation of the Town Clerk and Town Council is to read exactly what you said.
Sure. I would accept the recommendation of the Clerk and Council with respect to it failing to pass muster as a petition article.
Second, yeah. I would, I would accept that as a motion. You've said it, so you can make it, and I would second it.
All right. Motion made by Selectmen Newhouse, second by Selectmen Shumpu. All those in favor? And it's unanimous. Very good.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
Jeff, I'm gonna ask you just to refresh my memory, and in so doing, hopefully, refresh the memory of those that just listened. So, these petitioned articles, especially those that involve land or the proposal for land purchase, the petitioners would effectively have the opportunity at the March 18 hearing to make their case. Is that an accurate articulation of how the process, that's the next step in the process, if you will?
Yes, they would presumably want to attend the meeting of the Planning Board and Finance Committee on March 18, explain the basis for their request to purchase town property, or for that matter, to pursue these rezoning articles. With respect to the town-owned land, the Property Review Board will meet, following the public hearing, to consider the request to purchase town-owned property. They then will make a recommendation to me as to whether the properties should be deemed surplus to the town's needs, and then I would make a decision as to whether the, in fact, those properties are surplus to the town's need.
So, that would happen after the March 18 meeting, after you've gotten the recommendation from the Property Review Board, and you would make your determination before town meeting?
Yes.
Very well. Thank you.
All right, very good, Jeff. You want to go to the next preliminary discussion of annual town meeting, not petition warrant?
Yes, we have the non-petition articles. As you know, just starting from the very top, the first several are standard. First one announcing the election for school committee and Board of Selectmen, and the convening of the town meeting on May 3. Article 2 is to hear the reports of committees or act their own. Article 3 is to see if the town will vote to appropriate a transfer, borrow from any applicable statute, sums of money for paying unpaid bills. Article 4, to authorize the treasurer collector, with approval of the Board of Selectmen, to enter into agreements relative to banking services. Article 5 is essentially the omnibus budget article, where the various departments on the, both municipal and school side, will identify those expenditures. Article 6 is a, an article for the purchase of various vehicles for the town. In this case, we're requesting the purchase of five replacement police cruisers. That's in the, obviously, the Police Department, for the public buildings, Department 3, one-ton cargo vans, Department of Public Works, purchase of one heavy-duty dump truck, purchase of one compact sedan, purchase of one survey van, purchase of one excavator backhoe, and then the purchase of one mower. And then from the school department, the purchase of two student transport vans. Article 7 is to request to raise and appropriate funds to purchase two ground speed control retrofits for the existing Sanders. These devices distribute the material that is used during snow and ice events. Article 8, to see if the town will appropriate or raise and appropriate money for the purchase of one hydraulic breaker attachment. This is used by the water department when they're trying to excavate and run into ledge or materials of that nature. Article 9, see if the town will appropriate a transfer from available funds, the funds to purchase hardware and software, computer, for upgrades to computer systems located at the Town Hall and the Public Safety Building. Article 10, to raise and appropriate funds for the purchase of technology upgrades and improvements to the Woburn Street, Shawshin Elementary, North Intermediate, and West Intermediate schools. Article 11, to raise and appropriate funds for certain technology improvements, including replacement of desktop computers in the Wilmington Middle School. Article 12, raise and appropriate funds to purchase various equipment required for the new high school, including but not limited to power lift, floor scrubber machines, and snow blowers. Article 13, raise and appropriate funds to, let's see, pursuant to statute for renovation of the vault here at the Town Hall. Article 14, raise and appropriate funds to upgrade the energy management control systems at the Public Safety Building. Article 15, to raise and appropriate funds for the replacement of approximately 9,0170 square feet of roof area at the North Intermediate School. Article 16, to see if the town will raise and appropriate funds to address both municipal and school facilities, including but not limited to addressing energy efficiencies, plant operations, mechanical systems, structural issues, and code compliance. This article is a standard article, has been for the last several years. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate funds for the professional technical services related to the design and permitting of a replacement of a 30-inch culvert passing under Butters Row. Article 18, see if the town will raise and appropriate funds for the reconstruction of the parking lot at the Bazell Senior Center. Article 19, raise and appropriate funds to replace the self-contained breathing apparatus units which are used by each of the firefighters. Article 20, to see if the town will raise and appropriate funds to develop a municipal facilities master plan to include evaluation of school buildings, municipal buildings, ball fields, and other real property. Article 21 is to raise and appropriate or transfer funds for the design and cost estimates for development of the proposed recreational complex at the former Yentile Farm property. Article 22, to raise and appropriate funds for the use and funding a July 4 celebration. Article 23, to see if the town will, this, this article, I would note, will need to be revised, and it will be prior to the next Selectmen's meeting, but as it's written, it is intended to establish a new stabilization account for the purposes of funding other post-employment benefits. In fact, you may recall, a few years ago, former Town Manager Mike Kyra recommended a similar article. There was $100,000 that was raised and appropriated. The intention here is to add funds to that account, so the article will be revised to reflect that. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to establish a new stabilization fund entitled Employee Retirement Benefits, in accordance with Mass General Law. Again, this is a similar effort to begin to set money aside to address our ongoing retirement assessment for Middlesex Retirement System. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate funds for acquiring a section of property on Adams Street for highway and drainage purposes. Article 26 is the article for acceptance of Eleanor Drive that we discussed earlier. Article 27 is a standard article. This is to authorize the transfer from various line items to cover fiscal year 2014 budget deficits that may exist in particular accounts. Article 28 is the article to set aside funds for the town's senior citizens tax work-off program. Article 29 is to vote to raise and appropriate a transfer of funds in a sum for the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day. Article 30, to raise and appropriate funds for renewing, under the authority of Section 9, Chapter 40 of the General Laws, the lease of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Clubhouse for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Neil, Nee Ellsworth Post 2458, Veterans of Foreign Wars. Article 31 is to see if the town will raise and appropriate funds to establish revolving accounts, which is, again, an article that's been a standard for the last several years. Article 32, to see if the town will vote to amend the bylaws, inhabitant bylaws, by amending the sequence in Section 24. This is really a housekeeping article. It turned out, actually, this, this was something that was identified by Beverly Dalton in going through the articles, that these two particular sections had, were numbered identical, so essentially, it's just a numbering change. Article 33 is an article to amend the bylaws, inhabitant bylaws of the town, to add a Section 54 enforcement of Recreation Commission rules and regulations, and this is intended to establish some enforcement requirements, fines essentially, in the event that regulations that are established by the Recreation Commission, essentially over at Silver Lake, in the event that those are not followed, the police would have the authority to levy certain fines. Article 34, this is a follow-up from last year's annual town meeting. It's a proposed change to the zoning bylaw to address medical marijuana dispensaries, and it sets out a whole series of definitions and requirements for medical marijuana, and where such establishments may be located within the town's zoning map. Article 35 is intended, again, to address the medical marijuana treatment facilities. First, it's changing the term, medical marijuana treatment centers, as it's described in the zoning bylaw, to be replaced by registered marijuana dispensaries, which is the term that the state is now using, so we want to make sure that that is, that our regulations and bylaws are in conformance. And then, secondly, we are proposing to extend the expiration of the moratorium through 12/31/2014, so that in the event that the previous article fails, we would have an opportunity to go back to the drawing board and develop an article that might be more in keeping with the desires of the residents. article that might be more in keeping with the desires of the residents. And then the articles thirty-six and on are petition articles.
All right, very good. Jeff, you want to bring us the communications?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, at the night when the manager presented his budget, you had made a comment in passing about the Whitfield School, about the Roman House, and I've been giving that some thought, and the Roman House, I think, is a little bit of a different scenario than the Whitfield because there are existing administrative buildings in there, but my understanding is that we're not really using the Whitfield School at all at this point, and I certainly would defer to the manager for more particular description as to what we're using that for at this point, but I'd be interested in knowing what, what use, if any, we're putting it to. I know there were files stored there at one point, what the use is currently, how long we would project to use it for that purpose, and whether or not you think you could get numbers for the cost associated with the demolition of that school in fairly short order in the next few weeks. And the reason why I ask that is I happen to agree with some of the comments that Mr. McCoy made at our last meeting, and I'm thinking that the residents, if the board were inclined to include an article relative to the Whitfield School site, I think that the residents could make an informed decision as early as this town meeting as to whether or not it makes sense to demolish that building. So, so I guess if I could, through you, Mr. Chairman, to the manager, maybe find out the answers to some of those questions, if we have any tonight, or if we can have answers to those questions at our next meeting, that would be appreciated.
Well, certainly, in terms of the use, the building has, for a number of years now, been used to store files. We have been going through a purging process of late. There are still some documents stored there, although it's certainly been greatly scaled We don't have any immediate use for the property, for the building, that is, other than storage, and I think as we, as we can, we will be continuing to remove any documents from that location. The building is, the roof is in need of repair. George Hooper, the Public Buildings Superintendent, indicated to me that he had obtained a quote, I believe it's a couple of years old now, but the estimated cost to repair or replace the roof is thirty-five to forty-two thousand dollars, but that doesn't include any of the wood planking. He's not sure what condition the wood planking in is in, so that if that, you know, to the extent that there's any rot there, that would be an additional cost. He also, at the same time, this again was a couple of years ago, obtained a quote of approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to demolish the building. We'd certainly want to get an update on those quotes and could do that relatively quickly.
I guess I would just ask the board to consider if we could get some updated numbers for our next meeting, if the board's inclined to include that as a warrant article. I think it makes sense, and I'm not at all critical of the, of draft article. I think it's twenty on the municipal facilities master plan. I think it makes sense to take a holistic approach to our capital planning, but I just, I see that, and maybe it's just a function of the fact that I live fairly close and I travel that section of sixty-two so much, and I see a lot of the folks who use that, you know, the outdoor, the field space and the limited parking there, and I see people crossing the street, parking in private property across the street, and I just view it as a, you know, an imminent, imminent safety issue. So, if it's something that the manager can give us more information in, for our next meeting, I'd like the opportunity to consider the board putting it on an article for this, for this warrant.
Jeff, we can get some hard numbers at the next meeting. I think there's some type of mutual agreement to look at the matter, and maybe we'd have an agenda item at the next meeting, and why spend thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars on a roof where we could utilize that money somewhere else, if relative to a demolition? I'm not saying that's the whole sentiment of the board, but maybe we'll get some numbers.
What I would suggest is that we will, we will prepare two separate warrants, one without an article and one with an article, because next, the meeting of March tenth, the board will need to sign the warrant, so if we have two warrants, then depending upon the board's preference, you can take your pick.
That'd be great.
If I could say out a comment, just, you know, to be complete, I'd be in favor of looking at it as well, obviously, as a third member of the board, obviously, just from the efficiency of time and utilizing the town meeting floor, I think something like this deserves to potentially see the light of day at town meeting and let residents make the decision. It's, you know, we're just agreeing to have the discussion at town meeting, so it's not like, you know, we're making the decision for the town, we're just saying that, you know, to have it as a warrant article, you know, to discuss, which obviously Mr. Newhouse has done a fine job articulating. I would certainly be in favor of, of looking at that as well.
I personally think it's overdue.
I'm glad that this is coming up now, and I'm hopeful we can get this on the radar screen to discuss at town meeting. May I ask, Jeff, do we have ongoing maintenance and care over there for the building specifically? Not so much, I know, I've coached soccer for a number of years, and even though my son now has grown beyond the size of that field for the few years that he was playing on that field, while the building was maintained and kept safe for the region, it was one heck of an eyesore, and so I would go in back there often with the team, and, you know, there's the crumbling rocks, and sometimes it'd even be glass, and it always struck me that there was, you know, because it's in back of the building, that there was an opportunity there where, I don't know, it was, it was just not, not, it didn't present Wilmington in its best light to our visitors that would come and play there often. And as Mr. Newhouse said, the parking and some of the other issues were always a concern, and folks that knew me, knew that I sat on this board, would frequently say, hey, when are you guys going to take care of this? And, you know, so I'm glad that this is coming up for a conversation. But, I asked a question and I talked over the answer. Do we have ongoing maintenance costs that we, are we heating the building? Are we cooling the building? Are we, are we, we must keep water flowing in it, do we not?
It's very limited in the way of maintenance. The, the building still has electricity connected, although we're not, you know, really running the electricity. It's, to the extent it's heated, it's, and I'm not, I don't even believe the heat is running, or if it is, it's at a, you know, fifty degrees or something, so it's very limited in terms of what we're doing there.
Yeah, I mean, any cost that we're incurring to maintain or keep that building alive ought to be considered when we have a discussion or when the, when the townspeople have the opportunity to decide whether or not to keep the building alive going forward, so that's a factor in my mind, and I just thought I'd bring it up. Thank you.
One last point would be, you had indicated that there's records there. Could you, you know, either comment now or at the next meeting as to if this would put the town in any sort of hardship for storage, and if there would be, you know, how you would, I don't know what's there, so, you know, would you have to secure storage? Because where would, where would the records go, and would that be a monthly cost if we had to get a secure environment to move those? Is it staggering amounts of information there, and what does that do for your storage plan?
Yeah, I, that's something I would have to get back to the board on. I don't know specifically the volume of records that are stored there, or specifically what is stored there, so I'll need to do some follow-up.
Thank you.
Mr. Jim, too, if I may, I don't know if it's to that point yet, but I remember the Swain School with the fencing around it, because the building was actually falling apart, and I'm pretty sure that I've heard that this building is in pretty disarray as far as the physical structure of the building, whether it's imploding or exploding or whatever it's doing, but I'd hate to see it get to the point where we have to put fencing around it to keep the residents safe. So I'd also be in favor of looking into the cost to demolition.
I'll talk to Jeff Dern prior to the next meeting and probably put it on as an agenda item.
Okay, sounds good.
Very good. Moving forward.
All right, Jeff, communications. Communications. First item under communications is a, is correspondence from Jerry O'Reilly. I'll just read the letter. "I am in process of putting my home on the real estate market, but you already know that, this fact. A real, real estate agent contacted me unsolicited. I responded and stated I would put the home on the market in March, information and cost attached. My family stated that to wait until June when the grass is green, so done. The reason for a sale is that I live alone with constant surveillance by my family and the Butters widescreen next door. My life is uncomfortable and my peaceful enjoyment is not secure. Parentheses, police cruises are in the cemetery night and day and are at the gate next door all night long." End parentheses. "I am in my eighties and under care of several physicians, and I am once again an active out-of-patient at the Veterans Administration Hospital in Bedford. In my last note to the town manager, I asked if eminent domain was still on the table. His response that the taking of my property is still being considered. His statement put a mental burden upon my mind." End parentheses. "If so, would it go to town meeting this year, and need I be prepared?" Is the question. "I have the complete McLaughlin-Murphy Endola court record and finding." End parentheses, "if needed, but I would like to be treated as Mr. Leiford was when he was ill, in a friendly manner, when the town acquired his property next door to the town library. Please keep me informed." Just by way of information, the letter that I think Mr. O'Reilly may be referring to, he had made an inquiry some months ago about the cost of putting, connecting to water, and I believe the prospect of the town, or he's actually looking for particular records as well, and whether the town had any interest in the property. To the point with respect to the town's interest in his property, my response was, the town has not ruled out the possibility of seeking to acquire your property, so essentially, at this point, the town is not actively engaged in that process, but obviously, we would keep our options open.
And if you want to, you want to say, go ahead.
I mean, I think that, the letter that I recall the manager sending in response to that November twenty-sixth letter, basically said what we tell people in town all the time, that we're always interested in looking at properties that are located adjacent to to town properties, but we weren't, we weren't talking about eminent domain as recently as November. And with this, I guess, marketing literature, you might call it, that's attached to this, I mean, typically, talk about the town's potential interest in real estate in a public forum, but I'm not shy about saying, you know, for five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, you know, good luck to you. I won't be, I won't be rushing to put a deal together at five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but notwithstanding the, you know, the puff here, location, 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 which is right next to the high school, and apparently, the puff is now location in education, which is ironic, to say the least, but, I mean, if, if the author of this letter is interested, I don't mind saying publicly, for, you know, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, I'm, I'm not interested, so maybe that helps put his mind at ease.
My knee-jerk reaction to it is that it would be a little ambitious for us to get through executive session discussions and deliberations and go through the process and get it on to this year's warrant anyway. That's just a procedural observation, anyway.
I mean, the bottom line is if reasonable minds, and I'll say reasonable minds can get together, then it'd be something to look at. All right, good. Jeff, let me just keep on continuing.
All right, next under correspondence is memo from David Cohen from Comcast. He's describing in some detail the planned acquisition of Time Warner Cable. He talks about the process that will need to be gone through with the Federal Communications Commission to obtain their approval, lays out some of the virtues, at least in his mind, of this acquisition. Doesn't appear at this time that there's any, there's going to be any immediate impact We have correspondence from the Mass. Water Resources Authority, and they're providing the board with a preliminary update, or status, rather, on the estimated costs for the water and sewer assessment. The water, water assessment from the MWRA minus the joining fee, so to speak, is three hundred and sixty-three thousand eight eighty-three. The joining fee, if you recall, when the town became a member of the MWRA for water purposes, there was a fee that is paid out over twenty years, which is two hundred and nineteen thousand, so the total assessment, at least preliminarily, would be five hundred eighty-two, eight eighty-three. The budget estimate that we have is five sixty-nine, one sixty-three, but this number from MWRA is preliminary. We will find out closer to town meeting what the, possibly even in June, what the final number is, but I, I think we'll, in any event, we'll be able to address any difference there. Similarly, on the sewer side, the MWRA preliminary assessment for Wilmington is two million three fifty-four, two twenty-seven. The estimate that we developed was two million five twenty-nine, one sixty-one, so essentially on that one, we're, we have estimated a little higher than their preliminary assessment. We have correspondence directed to the chairman from Debbie Cipriani, the Recreation Director. "On behalf of the Wilmington Recreation Commission, I am requesting permission to conduct the annual Easter egg hunt on the town common on September, Saturday, April nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at two P.M. This fun family event is a sight to behold. Volunteers will blanket the town common with candy-filled eggs. Hundreds of children will circle the perimeter of the common and will rush to fill their Easter baskets once the starting signal is given. We cordially invite the members of the Board of Selectmen to join the festivities as spectators and volunteers. Volunteers should be at the town common by one fifteen P.M. In the event of rain or poor ground conditions, the event will be held at the high school cafeteria. This event is traditionally an overwhelming success. With your support, we look forward to continuing this time-honored event."
Is there a motion relative to the, as requested by the town manager on behalf of the Wilmington Rec Department?
So moved.
Motion made by Selectmen Salmaglia. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectmen Shampoo. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
We have under board to consider a, this is a memorandum from Carol Hamilton with regard to a gift of land, Sessors Map Forty-four, Parcel Seventy-One. Vacant land on Taplin Avenue Map Forty-four, Parcel Seventy-One is being donated to the town, to the care and custody of the Conservation Commission. The parcel contains approximately thirty-five thousand five hundred square feet of land and is adjacent to a parcel of town-owned land as well as a stream. The Conservation Commission, at its regularly scheduled meeting on February sixth, two thousand and fourteen, voted to accept the donation. Conservation Commission respectfully requests the board vote to accept the property as well. Commission feels it's in the best interest of the town to preserve this land and to protect the watershed.
Is there a motion to accept the gift as described by the town manager?
So moved.
Motion made by Selectmen Newhouse. Is there a second?
Seconds.
Second by Selectmen O'Connell. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. All right.
Next under board to consider, there's a request for the board to execute a notice of of claim. Lottie Weisberg was a schoolteacher in the Wilmington school system. I believe she was a grade school teacher for many years, as was her sister, Lena Letter. She passed away in two thousand and ten, and since that time, through her generosity, her estate has, over the last few years, donated two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-twenty dollars for a scholarship fund to, that's entitled Lottie Weisberg and Lena Letter Student Scholarship Fund. We received correspondence from Town Council's office within the last couple of weeks indicating that there is a, an annuity that remains in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars. And what is required at this point is for the board to make a motion to execute the New York Life Annuity Individual Claim Form, Contract Number seven-five-six-one-one-two-two-one-one, enacting pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter sixty, Section three-C, to accept the proceeds for deposit in the Lottie Weisberg and Lena Letter Student Scholarship Fund. So this, the board will, if it chooses, would sign off on this claim form, and then it would also go to the school committee for similar action before proceeds would be received.
Is there a motion to approve as described by the town manager?
So moved.
Motion made by Selectmen Samaglia. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectmen O'Connell. Are those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we could have the manager, through the assistance of council, identify who the representative of the estate is, make sure we send a thank you. I'm sure it's already being done, but could extend our thanks.
Absolutely.
Indeed, I ask, I was going to, I appreciate that, Mr. Newhouse. I was, I wanted to say publicly that hopefully, if any of the families of Ms. Weisberg or Ms. Light are listening, or have occasion to read press from this evening's meeting, that I'm sure, I don't want to speak on behalf of all of you, but we're very grateful. It's very generous, and the town will make very good use of these very generously donated funds.
Well noted, yes. All right, public comments, any public comments? No public comments. All right, why don't we do new business and community reports, and I'll start on this side of the table.
Nothing here.
Good, down over here.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Shampu.
No, sir, not this evening. Thank you.
All right. And then, right now, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, no, no, important dates, there's a staple to this piece of.
Important dates, we have tomorrow evening, the Finance Committee will be meeting at, actually, it says six, seven, but it, we're meeting at six-thirty, because we're doing a makeup for recreation with one of those snow events. She was not able to attend the meeting. So six-thirty, rec, and then in addition to that, police, public safety, central dispatch and fire. I would note, on the twenty-sixth of February, there's going to be a meeting, I've invited members of the July Fourth Committee and the nonprofits to a meeting in the auditorium to, in part, explain the basis for my decision not to allow fireworks at the property off of Wildwood Street. And then, in, in part, to also just field any questions or entertain any discussion that people may have about this issue. I know it's a sensitive issue, and it's my hope that we can get through it and establish some type of event for July fourth. So that meeting will be on Wednesday, the twenty-sixth. Thursday, the twenty-seventh, Yentile Farm Development Committee will be having a meeting at the high school in the cafeteria. This is going to be, I think, a very important event for people interested in that property to attend. There'd be a series of opportunities for participants to literally take the property as, as it's currently conditioned and lay out different options, whether it's fields or play apparatus, any number of different features, and come up with some ideas as to what the options might be for a final design. March tenth is Board of Selectmen's next meeting, here in Room Nine. Also, public hearing relative to the acceptance of streets. March eighteenth, Finance Committee Planning Board, public hearing, that's in the auditorium. And then, May, April fourth, the last day to register to vote for annual town elections and town meeting. Town Clerk's office will be open from eight-thirty A.M. until eight P.M.
All right, now, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Selectmen Newhouse, second by Selectmen Samaglia. Are those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, and everyone have a nice night.